We'd like to welcome you to our third town golf course, Lake Monterey Golf Course. I think we got in in the nick of time as it starts to downpour. So, you know, you try to plan these things and then he throws something at you. You've just got to improvise, right? So, how many have been to number one or number two for these? Okay, okay. So, no, good. We continue to see a new mix of individuals here each time we do this. So, that's our hope. That's what we want to do. So, a couple of ground rules or rules of engagement. We're going to have some noise in the background. Larry's still busy and Dave's still busy checking people in. From a question perspective, some feedback we had from the last meeting was, I went through a history of the golf course and I got some really good comments on that with, hey, not a lot of people knew about the history of how did this happen? Why are we where we're at today? Excuse me. So, I'll go through that. And then I have some writing questions and then we'll open it up. We have an hour for this one. We'll try to be cognizant of your time. We have some writing questions that popped up. I'll go through those as well and then we'll open it up to the members here for questions. If you have any questions, we'll try and pass around the mic so everybody can hear you. Please be respectful, kind, courteous when you're asking questions. We'll do the same when we try to answer them, okay? It's all like a plan. And I can tell it's early in the morning because the first one we had, there's some other kind of beverages on the table. All right. So, let's talk about the history of the golf course. October 2000, Sandy Pines was approached by Lake Monterey Golf Course, the previous owner, to establish a purchase agreement. That owner was in discussions with Sandy Pines to purchase this golf course as well as other individuals, another individual that was looking to run the golf course and developers. So, that's the key. We've got to control our neighbors, right? As far as the land around us, we want to make certain that we control our destiny. So, Sandy Pines, another golf course owner, and then there were some developers in that conversation as well. November 2000, communication of members about, excuse me, a special ballot vote for the purchase of Lake Monterey Golf Course went out. This is all in the footprints. So, if you want to take, if you still have them, it's all archived in the footprints. What I found interesting about this when I started digging into this is, hmm, we're going to do a special election, a special ballot vote in December. So, communication went out. Our bylaws state 30 days prior to the actual event, we have to communicate. Really? We're going to do this in December? It seemed a little wonky, I guess it is. So, that communication went out in November. December, the actual election took place. And if you read the footprints back in 2000, it was one of the largest responses from the members at that time. I think it still is. They had close to 1,400 members vote on this golf course during the off-season. And it was overwhelmingly passed, I want to say like 1,200 to 200. Again, the statistics are in the footprints. So, what did we buy? Purchase of Lake Monterey Golf Course was $675,000 for land, $225,000 for the building and the buildings and the equipment. So, a total of $900,000. If you're here for the first one, I was asked, hey, what did we pay for this? My answer to that was roughly a million bucks, pretty close. June 2001, Lake Monterey Golf Course LLC is established, completely separate entity from Lake Monterey Golf Course. Lake Monterey Golf Course LLC was established. It is a manager managed LLC with its sole member being Sandy Pines Wilderness Trails. The deed was recorded under Lake Monterey Golf Course LLC, a wholly owned subsidiary of Sandy Pines. So, what does that mean? Sandy Pines on paper owns the golf course. A separate entity was established for that purpose. We'll get into why, why the difference, why two different entities. Promissory notes totaling approximately a million dollars were established with the following criteria. Lake Monterey Golf Course LLC is the borrower of the money. Sandy Pines Wilderness Trails is the holder of the loan. No interest charged to Lake Monterey Golf Course. No payback date established. The terms were payback from time to time to be determined by the golf course and Sandy Pines Wilderness Trails. Lake Monterey Golf Course will begin paying the loan if and when feasible based on profits from golf courses. First assessment of $125 per member was established around 2011 through 2014. That was, when I looked at the resolution, that was to cover operating costs. You have to cover operating costs. We'll get into that. Why that's important as well. If you do the math on that, the assessment comes to about $270,000 that the members put into the golf course to cover operating costs. Second assessment of $150 was through the 10-year capital assessment that was established in 2015. That's to cover operating costs and capital. Operating costs, your wages and expenses to run the golf course, capital, new equipment, bridge that was washed out here, that's new equipment, that's capital, lawn mowers, capital. That totals $324,000. 270 still stays in operational costs, 54,000 in capital. It costs approximately $500,000 to run the golf course. So, a couple of things, why the two separate entities? One is, from what I understand, what I've seen, tax purposes, things of that nature. We had a question last week as to, why didn't Sandy Pines charge interest? Why didn't we do that? We lost additional money on interest. I don't know about you, but if I had a mortgage, I'd love to have a zero interest mortgage with a payback of whatever's mutually agreed upon between the two entities. Seems like a pretty, pretty nice deal. But the other reason for the separate entity is, we can do things at this golf course that we can't do up in Sandy Pines. I joked about different beverages from this meeting to the last meeting. You can have beverages here, all right? We can serve beer. You can take it out on the golf course. You can't bring your own beer, own liquor, alcohol, out on the golf course, but we can serve that here. We can do karaoke. We can do dinners. We can have beverages here. We can do a lot of adult activities that you might be able to do on your site with gatherings, but Larry and team have done a really good job of trying to bring additional events into the golf course, buy some beverages, buy some food, and help drive those profits up to get the payments of, one, the loan and, two, cover the operational costs so it's not such a hit to the members, okay? Those are really the two different reasons that I've seen is why there was a separate entity. So, the why, I want to talk about the why. We got questions over the last couple of them. So, why are we doing this? This thing is due, it's up in 2025. Why are we talking about this now? And why don't we just do another assessment later and be done with it? How I see this is two answers to that question. One, don't wait till the last minute because if you come to 2025 and then you put it on the ballot, if it gets voted down, then the golf course is scrambling with, all right, how do I pay my bills? Number two is, as I dug through the research on this, again, because I started in 2019, this seems to be a recurring story. It originated in 2000. Let's buy this so we can control our destiny, be another amenity to the golf course, it'll appraise our, it'll help our membership values go up, and maybe we can make some profit out of it. The profit has been the struggling point. So, in 2010, we had an assessment to cover operating costs. In 2015, we had an assessment to cover operating costs. As we dig through the numbers, the operating costs continue to be pretty consistent between that $500,000. You'll see some years go down to 400, some years go up to 600. So, the sweet spot on average is probably $500,000. Those have fluctuated, but really haven't changed, okay? Members continue to want a preferred pricing, which I get because this is Sandy Pines. This is part of us, right? If we want to continue to have preferred pricing, this needs to be looked at at different avenues as it's an amenity to the park and we're going to have to subsidize it. Why not an end date? Let's do another capital assessment and we'll re-figure that. We'll re-figure and see how the profits have gone through the golf course. We want it to be standalone. That was talked about in 2000. It was talked about in 2010. It was talked about in 2015. It was talked about now in 2023. The data says, again, if we want as members to have some preferential treatment, we're going to have to subsidize that preferential treatment. The profit has gone up during the time of this recent capital assessment. Members, again, have put in $270,000 to help fund the operations of this business. The profit in 2015 was seven grand. So, basically, members funded $263,000 to run this place. You start going through a trend line as of the last really three years where we've tasked the golf course. We hear the members, let's try to be a standalone business. We bring in all this activity. You see public, the majority of the people that were checking in here while we were waiting to start this, public golf, okay? We brought in a ton of public golf. You see that profit start to increase. If you look at our financials last year, 130, 133,000 dollars of profit, but that's with $270,000 assessment funded by the members. You take that out, it's technically 137, 140,000 dollar loss. But, again, I try to be half-full, not half-empty with the glass that I'm looking at, is members really haven't funded $263,000 like they did in year one. They're funding 137, 140,000 dollars. So, who's funding the rest of that? Public golf. We have members coming down here for karaoke, breakfast on Sundays, you know, talk to Larry and Dave. They met people here that have never golfed before, that have come down and had these, had these breakfasts and had these karaoke's and dinners and things of that nature, both from the public and from up at Sandy Pines. So, they're doing everything they can to try and make this a self-sustaining entity. The four or five things that you need to be a self-sustaining golf course, as we've looked at other golf courses around the area here, we've talked to Diamond Springs, Glen Eagle, the Pines, Maple Hill, there's a ton of them around this area, right? Number one is member greens fees. So, what do we charge the members? We're charging public, public rate. Members get a discount. They're $5 for nine holes, okay? What, Larry? The public is around 19?
Yeah.
Yeah, around $19 for nine holes. Okay, so, members get a discount, almost half. Golf cart rentals is the number two thing that drives profit into a golf course. What do members bring when they come down? They bring their own golf carts. We lose out on the rentals of that. Number three is a full-service restaurant with a full menu, bar, liquor. Larry and team have done a good job of adding a lunch menu and, you know, after, you know, I golf here Thursday night leagues. If I want to grab something, they have something back there. Bless their heart, they're working their tails off to give us these options, but it's not a full-service restaurant, bar, liquor. We don't have a drink cart. Larry's lost some of the corporate events because one, we're a short golf course, we're a par 65, majority of them are par 72, and they have drink, they have drink carts out there. We don't have a drink cart. We're working on that, but we don't have one yet. So, as you tick down, how do we be a self-sustaining business? We're kind of at a disadvantage. So, we continually get challenged by the members. You've got to stand on your own. We can, but the other member preferential treatment of pricing, no golf cart charges, things of that nature, will have to go away. So, that's kind of where we're at right now. It's been the same conversation since 2000. So, we get challenged with, put another assessment out there and let's think about it later. I'm not the one that kind of wants to kick this can down the road. We've had the golf committee look at this. We've had the finance committee look at this. The board has looked at this. I would love to have an end date on our property taxes here. I'd love to have an end date on wages going up. I'd love to have an end date on fertilizer not increasing 37%. Those end dates don't come in real life. So, that's one of the reasons why we're talking about the assessment is a Band-Aid. Let's fix it now and let's put even in the dues and cover the operating costs. We still have a loan out there. Out of the million dollars, the loan is about halfway paid, $480,000. That was a topic of some emotional conversations, I think, at our last one, or maybe even the first one. If you look at our balance sheet, there's 380 or 480?
480.
480, excuse me, 480. Again, we pay on that loan. The terms are, when the golf course makes some profit, we do pay back. I would say over the last, at least since I've been here in four years, and I would even go back to probably five or six years, $25,000 one year, $50,000 the last two years, we paid $75,000 on it. We're making payments on it, but at that rate, that loan will go, we have another six years on that loan. So, we're trying to fund the business, pay back the loan, provide preferential treatment to the members. It's a little bit of a challenge. Now, one of the things that I looked at when I started looking at this is, maybe we're just taking the $270,000 and not doing anything with it. We're just, we're just taking your money and saying thank you and not doing anything with it. That's not the case. We continue to try and improve this golf course anytime we can and every time we can. I mean, the greens are beautiful, the fairways are beautiful, the customer service is beautiful. We're increasing public play. We're starting to increase advertising out to the public. We had a member sitting right over here at the first one with one of his comments, be careful what we wish for. You bring in the public, that's great. They're helping subsidize and pay for these operating costs. But the discussion with that member is, I used to come down here and show up and I'd have to wait maybe five, 10, 15 minutes and they could get me out. Now, I have to call ahead a day or two to get a tee time. So, we're trying to manage all of these things and we're coming to a point where we're getting better, but the focus really needs to be that this is an amenity to the park and we have to start treating it as such. And it's going to take some subsidizing to get this to continue to move forward. So, let's do this. I do have some writing questions, but Larry, I saw your hand out there. Did you have, nope, no question? Okay, all right. Anybody have any, any questions out here so far that they're itching to ask? Otherwise, I can go through the write-in ones and then maybe those will answer some of your questions.
Jeff, one thing I don't think we've hit on, the cost of building this building too, this was added as well.
Correct. This building was added, and I gave you a number last week and you challenged me on that number. And you're right, I actually found the resolution. After, after the loan and everything took place, $386,000 to build this building and this clubhouse. So, total 386,000 dollars is what it took to build this. So, that was in addition. That's one of the questions we've had is, okay, so this is $125 in our dues. The advantages and disadvantages to this is, let's go through the advantages. We don't have to do this again in five years, 10 years, okay? We can, we can have the golf cart, golf course start planning, all right, let's build an expansion here. Let's do some of the things. Right now, they're kind of strapped with, I don't know if I'm going to get a new assessment. I don't know if this is going into the dues. So, some of the plans that they have are kind of on hold. That takes care of that. The other thing is, in an assessment, the $150 that you're paying currently does not get adjusted for inflation. A capital assessment is fixed. So, that $150 was flat for 10 years. The 125, we're going to start lower, the 125 will get adjusted for COLA to help offset some of those headwinds that we see out of inflation, right? Some of those things, those will get adjusted. Question that we had last week was, well, so it's really not $125. This could grow at, you know, 5%, 8% like it is right now. Technically, that individual's right. However, if you look at the data over the last 10 years for COLA, COLA has increased at Sandy Pines in your dues by 2.6%. Okay? We've been hit the last two years with 8.6 and 4.9 is going to be next year. That's due to inflation. COLA also does not take into account the stuff that really, really impacts our financials, both in the park and here at the golf course. COLA is a basket of goods, CPI index, your market goods, okay? The stuff that you see at the store, things of that nature, going up in costs. It adjusts for that. It does not take into account wages, healthcare, 401Ks, insurance, property taxes. We have to offset all of that. So, 2.6% increase on the COLA over the 10 years is not a bad number. We've been hit pretty hard the last two years. I don't disagree. But that takes, that takes care of some of the challenges that we have here with, you know, some of the wages, some of the other operating costs. We'll still have to offset those and figure those out. COLA will take care of some of the other things. So, I think it's a good mix, okay? Disadvantages of that, members have said, there's no end date. I want an end date. Okay, I said earlier, I want an end date as well. I want an end date for not only myself here at Sandy Pines, but in my personal life and as a member, I would love an end date on stop paying property taxes. I don't want to pay an electric bill anymore. I don't want to pay for lawn service. There's no end date on some of these things. So, I hear that argument as well. So, those are kind of the things that are in front of us. $125 in the dues that will continue to go forward. It'll continue to get looked at and reviewed. Our process is, you elect board members, you get on a committee. If you don't like it, you make change. All of this has been reviewed unanimously approved by the golf committee, by the finance committee, the board, they brought the proposal, they approve it as well to bring it to you for a vote. So, those are some of the things that we need to think about. Let's just raise the fees for members. We talked about that as well. What would that look like? You're paying $5 now for a round of nine. This is a nine-hole golf course and it's really nine holes that way. Everybody wants to play the front nine. So, we did do some data as well. 27,000 rounds of nine holes is what our data says on average over the last few years have come through this golf course, 27,000. Math is pretty simple. If we need $270,000 in operating costs to just try and break even and fund this place, raise the nine holes from $5 to $15. $10 times 27,000 rounds, $270,000. So, now you're paying $15 for a round of nine and $30 for a round of 18. I don't have a crystal ball, but I've talked to a lot of members in the, in the golf course here in the park. You go from five to 15, that 27,000 rounds is going to start going like this. And then we have to adjust again. So, those are, those are the things that are in front of us right now.
Jeff?
Yes.
Just put, the associate members pay the $5, right? The same as these guys?
No. Associates pay seven.
Okay, okay.
Members are five, associates are seven. In full, in full transparency, what's in front of, a little precursor for the board here, we meet Monday to go through our work session and the budget, and then the budget will be voted on on Friday at our board meeting. What's on the table right now is, members' green fees go up $2 for members and $3 for associates. So, now an associate would pay $10 for a round of five, a round of nine, excuse me, and a member would pay $7 for a round of five. Let me get hers. She had her hand up and I'll get yours, sir. Yes, Karen.
Jeff, for the $125 after the golf course, if it doesn't need it, where does that $125 go? Does it go back to the park or does it go into a fund for this to add on for other things?
Great, great question. So, if you didn't hear that, Karen, Site 978.
Sorry, you didn't say to specify.
Oh, I know, I know. I wanted to call you all. No, that's a great question. So, the question was, hey, $125, once this loan is paid, what happens with that $125? Does that now shift out of the golf course and of the Sandy Pines? They're separate entities. That is one of the writing questions that we have on there is, if we do this, how do we make certain that this is earmarked for just the golf course? If you read the proposal that's on the ballot, it clearly states that it's for golf course operations, capital, and other expenses. It's for the golf course. So, help fund the operations, help pay back the loan, and then once that loan is gone, we can start thinking about, hey, do we expand this clubhouse? Do we expand and make a full-service kitchen? What are some of the things that we can do here? The answer is yes. That $125 would stay at the golf course and then we can utilize that for other capital projects that we can't do right now because we're trying to pay back the loan, fund operations, and then give preferential pricing. Your question, sir.
Okay. I was listening to your proposal on that with proposed member green fees going up to 15. And you said that there was 27,000 rounds on the front nine. In my calculations, it would take $10 a round to get to 270,000. And you said 15, so I'm kind of lost on the math there.
So, fair point. We would take a look at, so the $5 right now is funding what we have today.
Right.
Which is enough. We know that there's $270,000 that the members bring in. Not every member golfs here, right? So, the 27,000 is the entire golf course for rounds of nine, not just the front, to be clear. Just high, just some high-level math. You're paying, you're paying $5 today. If there's 27,000 rounds, add $10. I understand where you're coming. It might be lower than 10 to try and get through there, but I'm just trying to do some high-level math, the long example.
I would be in favor of an increase in the green fees. And then you also mentioned about the members, what the members do when they come here, they bring their own carts. If, if there is a need to increase in that, then maybe there might be a fee, what do they call it?
Trail fee.
Trail fee. You know, and maybe you could incorporate that into the, into the actual green fee total.
Agreed.
So, you know, and maybe that would be the 15, maybe. So, you know, and maybe that would be the fifteen, maybe it would be a little bit less if you rented a cart.
Fair, fair point, yeah. So those, um, again, if this, if this doesn't pass, then, again, while we're doing it now, we got a couple of years to pivot and come up with some other plans, right? Some of those plans are already being discussed, just like you're talking about, trail fees, maybe it's not fifteen, maybe it's something else. Uh, we had one member say, hey, raise it to twenty bucks. I'm fine with paying twenty bucks. That's forty for a round of eighteen. To give you an idea, um, we did some, did some math on this as well. If you have a family of four out here, so if my wife and I and my, um, son and son-in-law come out here and golf, we get charged ten dollars, right? Twenty dollars for a round of eighteen. Um, and then the associates get charged fourteen dollars for a round of eighteen. That's twenty-four bucks. If you go to a public golf course, or we raise this, uh, you know, a family of four is gonna be paying, you know, a hundred and sixty bucks, forty bucks a round, right? And again, from a member perspective, this is just such an awesome entity, amenity to use. Let's keep the preferential pricing, continue to get the members to come here. I, I brought, I brought my friends in here, and they've come back and said, this is a beautiful golf course. And then they've come and paid public rates, even, you know, without me, when, when I'm not around. So there's advantages to keeping that lower price for our members. We just gotta, we gotta find that, we gotta find that sweet spot. Are we gonna do, are, are we gonna treat it as an amenity? Or are we going to say, hey, no, it's gotta stand on its own, and we gotta adjust pricing?
Well, I'm, I'm in agreement with, with doing the, you know, the, the fees that are the hundred and twenty-five a year. I'm not opposed to that. I'm, I'm just saying, you know, the adjustment into the, the green fee for members, understandably, it's gotta go up. I mean, this is a giveaway price, really, in my opinion.
Yeah, no, good, good one.
Um, the thing we're trying to look at with the board is to make this affordable for families and members. And if you price people out of bringing their family, then you start losing.
Right.
So where is that middle point? So if you double the price, triple the price, how many people aren't gonna bring their family aboard? They're just gonna bring one.
Right.
So we're trying to make it an amenity, and, you know, we're helping to fund an amenity that will teach, where kids can learn golf, where families can come, you know, they can come down here and do golf lessons, things like that. That's why we're looking at it. We, we don't wanna raise it too high that our members no longer have the ability to, to do it.
Oh, go ahead.
Um, I also think as members, paying a hundred and twenty-five dollars for a year is a steal. And I don't golf. Maybe when I get older, I'll golf. At school, next year. Next year, I'll be sixty. Ah, now that y'all know. Um, I went to Meyer last week to get groceries for a week and spent over a hundred and twenty-five dollars. So I guess I just wanna put that into a little bit of perspective. We're not asking for a thousand dollars every year. I mean, we're not asking for too much, I don't think. We are being reasonable. We looked at the numbers, we're, we're trying, we reduced it by a little bit, uh, because the golf course is doing so well. I think we are doing our due diligence by trying to keep this amenity affordable for families, grandkids, um, by paying a hundred and twenty-five dollars. I also think that that hundred and twenty-five dollars, keeping this golf course, my lot is going up in value by way more than a hundred and twenty-five dollars a year, um, to have this amenity. If we didn't, I'm afraid it would go the other way. So that's my two cents.
Thank you, Jenny. I'm gonna get her in the back, and then I'll give you, okay? I'm gonna get my stuff some today, so here.
Hi, my name is Nancy, I'm a K five oh six. I am not a golfer. I'm trying to figure out the crunch of numbers, why you didn't go down to one twenty-five and not stay at one fifty. If you could state that that one fifty, the prices have remained the same for Sandy Pine members, or would they still have had to have gone up? And the other thing that I wanna point out, I don't know what the percentage is, but I know many golf courses have gone under in the state of Michigan. So I am all for keeping it lower so families can enjoy it, and I'm willing to pay more. And I agree with Jenny, you know, our property values have gone up. And as we can see, our political system is busted, and, and, uh, are just going to be going up. I mean, we're really going to be having a recession plus inflation, which I think we're experiencing now. We have to face the facts that we cannot run on water.
Thank you. No, all, all good, um, comments. So to answer your question, um, the golf committee and the finance committee looked at multiple options, uh, including raising it from a hundred and fifty to going down below a hundred and twenty-five. There was a lot of debate between the golf committee and the finance committee, just leave it at a hundred and fifty, and then that's the status quo. The comment that came out of that was, when we looked at our data, our data says, out of the two thousand one hundred and sixty-two member sites here, about nine hundred-ish, um, around nine hundred-ish to a thousand, so not quite half, are using the golf course. So let's put a little money in the pocket of the individuals that aren't using the golf course, and then raise the greens fees for those that are using the golf course. They thought that was a happy video. So that's, that's why we came, that's why we came to a hundred and twenty-five. Good, good question. Yes, sir.
Have you got an idea how much it costs per membership to maintain the water park and the pools?
I get that question, I, I get that question all the time. The short answer is, I have a, I have an educated guess, but I'm not com- uh, comfortable in that educated guess. I mean, if you look at our financials, you can take a look at, um, you know, what the pool supplies cost. Those are going up. Maintenance, um, you know, I have two, three, sometimes four people in maintenance, cleaning the pools, doing maintenance work, cleaning the equipment. Every season I fluctuate, or we fluctuate anywhere from, you know, seven to ten or twelve lifeguards at X amount of dollars per hour, times the hours. So we have an educated guess, um, but I, I hesitate to share that, because as soon as I share that, it, it will probably be wrong. Then it'll show up on Facebook, and then, I just don't want that, I just don't want that number out there. But we, we have, we have tried to pull some of that out, and, you know, that, so how much does it cost around the water park? And, uh, you know, how much does it cost to do all these other things? We don't charge for those things. Um, we do charge here at the golf course. Um, and to the young lady's comment in the back there about, uh, golf courses going under, ironically, when I stopped in at the Pines in Byron Center, uh, to talk to them about this, uh, last, last year and this past fall, um, they said, well, here's my, here's my rates, and, uh, here's what we charge, but I don't know if you wanna use them, because we sold it to a developer, and we're no longer gonna be here. So, so fair, fair point, that golf course is going up, so. Any other, any other questions so far out here? Do a time check, we got about twenty minutes. Let's get to some, uh, writing questions here. There was a comment on Facebook about excess funds on, on our balance sheets. The question is, why, why are we asking for dues increase when we have excess funds already existing year after year? Um, and I believe they're looking at the balance sheets of OCS Pines. If the answer is that the excess funds will no longer exist, then why won't those exist? And where are they going? And why can't we use excess funds to run the golf course? So that terminology is not accurate. I saw that post on Facebook. We don't have excess funds. What you look at, Kimberly Williams, our CFO, uh, bless her heart, she does an awesome job here, um, her footprint states that our funds are up on the balance sheet, and we have a reserve. And that reserve that we try to manage based on our third-party financial accountants that review our financials every year to make certain that we're paying the proper taxes, following the proper accounting guidelines, they state that a business of this size, which is twenty-seven million dollars, Sandy Pines is a twenty-seven million dollar company, should have ninety to a hundred and eighty days of cash on hand in case of anything happens. And hypothetically, a pandemic, okay? Anybody here, Dave Ramsey? I brought that up, brought that up last time, right? Your emergency fund. So during the pandemic, um, I hope I should state this, because there's not a correlation. I started, and then the pandemic hit. Kimberly and I sat around and said, the property taxes didn't stop, the electric bills didn't stop, all these other things didn't stop. We still had to maintain, um, the park, so wages didn't stop. How do we maintain that? We had an emergency fund. So there's not excess cash out there. We are a not-for-profit. We try to run as close to zero as possible, and if there is enough profit at the end, that goes into our reserve.
Sandy Pines is a not-for-profit.
Sandy Pines is a not-for-profit, correctly. Um, and, and the golf course is, but this question was specific to Sandy Pines. So we are a not-for-profit. Um, there are no excess funds there. And then if we do have money at the end, we take a look at, where do we put that for capital projects or offsetting of wages? Members' dues pay for about forty percent of the actual operating budget. You take a look at our financials, the operating budget is about seven point one, seven point three. You do the math, twenty-one sixty-two, twenty-three hundred dollars roughly for capital assessments and dues, you're gonna come in somewhere around four and a half million, I believe. Four and a half million doesn't cover a seven point one operating budget. So the other cash that we have to generate are through your pumpouts and other fees, things of that nature, which we get challenged on as well. But we have a beautiful, uh, golf course, we have a beautiful park here, and sixty percent of the costs that you get charged is a menu. You get a choice on that. You don't, you don't have to buy a boat and get a boat stake and put boat sticker on it. You don't have to have two golf carts. I know some members that don't have golf carts, they ride bikes. Um, you know, you, these are sixty percent of the costs that we need to help cover that budget. You get a choice in whether you wanna pay those or not. The other forty percent, you do have to pay, and we're trying to offset it. So. Larry?
Can I ask a question? The golf course itself, does it have a cash reserve? And is there a target for us to just hit here at the golf course as far as getting a cash reserve? I don't know. I think I know the answer, but...
You can't, you can't ask that question, Larry.
I know. I have to.
No, that, that's, that's actually a great question. The, the short answer is no. The, the, uh, golf course does not have a cash reserve because of all the things that we talked about. We're trying to pay a loan off, pay for operating costs that continue to increase, and then provide a preferential pricing and advantages to the members. So if anything happens to the golf course, so let's talk about COVID. Um, you know, the, the golf course had to skinny down a lot of the, the staff and a lot of the expenses just to maintain and use that two hundred and seventy thousand dollars that the members have put into it. So we're not there yet. That is one of the goals that we wanna get to, is have a cash reserve for the, uh, for the golf course as well, but we're, we're not there yet. No, good question. Yep, Ellen?
Since you brought up COVID and golf cars, I wanna clear up a misconception that was brought up at the last meeting. Someone said that the increase in value of our lots over the past few years has nothing to do with the golf course, because the golf course was shut down. That's an absolute untruth. The golf course actually had a pretty good year, because that was one of the activities along with camping that people could do. And having this golf course here probably drove more people to camp and more people to buy.
Great point. Thank you. Yes?
Thanks.
Okay, sure.
Um, I have to say, I do agree with you, too. I don't golf, but members of my family do. And golfing here, I would just soon pay the hundred and twenty-five dollars a year so that my family, my kids can come here and golf at that lesser rate. That, the hundred and twenty-five dollars per year, if, if anyone golfs, is almost cheaper than raising the golf rates to fifteen or twenty dollars. It's just, it's a great amenity. Um, there's many people, when, when we purchased the golf course, I was here then, there were many people that stated the golf course is why they bought in here. That is a lot of people's draw. It's not mine. It might be someday.
When you're older.
When I'm older. Next year. On the day when there's nobody here, because no one will let to be behind me, I guarantee. But it is, it's a great amenity. And if this golf course goes away, what's gonna be here? A housing development? What? It, it's just not a good idea to, I'm for a hundred and twenty-five dollars.
Awesome. Thank you. No, great comments. Time check here, we got about thirteen minutes. Um, I only have a couple more, um, write-ins here, so I would assume there would be, if, if this proposal passes and is added to our dues, I would assume there would be no fee to play golf as a member. Would that be the case? I think, I think we walked through the logic on that one. The, that it turns out, um, we appreciate all of our golfers' view, but unfortunately, the answer would be no to that. It seems we are, um, we are seeing, it seems we're a little bit lost, uh, why the golf course has not been more profitable, and maybe not, um, managed well in the regards of advertising and local papers. How do we, how do we prove that? One, again, I wanna say, the management of the golf course is about excellent. I would say it would last definitely two years, if Larry's been here. So Larry, thank you. Number two, Larry, Larry has thought about, hey, he's done some here, so let's turn it over. We're gonna turn it over to Dave. Uh, Dave Ingles is the new general manager, who's been at the front desk, actually checking people in during this. Um, Dave has a lot of experience in running, uh, golf courses as well as a general manager. We're gonna be in good hands with Dave. And actually, one of the things that Dave has talked about was, how do we set up better advertising to the public to get more golfers in here? So he's got a, he's got a plan for that with, um, uh, working with the mail, um, service here. I can't remember if it's door or wheeling, but we have a list of, we're gonna start targeting, um, the surrounding neighborhoods and the surrounding public for public golf areas at Sandy Pines. So we're working on that. So we, we do have some work to do, and we, we acknowledge the work, and we're gonna, we're gonna go after and get it done. Let's see. I think we touched on this, um, a little bit, but if the golf course isn't self-sustainable, I would be willing to fund it with a permanent assessment. As long as that money was always earmarked for the golf course to maintain the amenity. What I wouldn't want to happen is the assessment moved into the general fund permanently, and another assessment for the golf course occurred, or that money gets absorbed with no accountability. Is that what this proposal does? So one, again, we read the language on the proposal. It's... It's specific to the golf course. Two, it will stay with the golf course. Three, because it's a separate entity, our accountants will look at that cash and where it goes and it will not go in the general fund. It can't go in the general fund. It's gotta be specific to the golf course. So a permanent assessment is kind of like what we're, it's in the dues. It's gonna, it's gonna be permanent. And let's stop doing the insanity of having the same conversation we had in 2000, 2010, 2015, and here today. Let's fix it now, put it in the dues, move it forward so we can continue to have a, a plan. One of the other questions on here is, hey, do you have a five-year or 10-year plan? And, you know, what is that for the golf course? Um, we, we have a bunch of ideas, but it's hard to put a 10-year plan together when, you know, in two years, you don't know if you're gonna have funding. So that plan is gonna change. This, this will actually help us put a 10-year, five-year, 10-year plan together and be confident that we can start doing some of the things that we can do because an end date stops that. Yes?
Since we're paying ourselves back for the loan, Kimberly may break on highs, but why don't we forgive the loan since it's, from going from one hand to the other?
Right. So, good question. Question is, hey, the loan that's hanging out there, since we're paying it back, um, on ourselves, um, why don't we forgive it? So that question came up last week. Um, you can go out and take a look at the answer to that. The short answer is, I don't know if I can have a short answer for that, right? But they're two separate entities, right? So are we paying ourselves back on that loan? I understand the logic. Members raised the, the money, loaned it to the golf course. The golf course is paying that back based on, I understand the logic. However, um, where I challenge the logic is, if I follow your logic in 2015, I wouldn't necessarily disagree with that logic to some extent, where we're paying ourselves back at 100%. But as we've increased the profitability of the golf course, how have we done that? With the public. And the public is helping pay back the loan that Sandy Pines has lent to the golf course. But there is a key that we have two separate entities. And I know why Ellen has her hand up because she's gonna explain that. Hold on.
Okay. I have a, a unique way of looking at this, okay? If you have a family that owns property up north and everybody benefits from it, you know, and the family owns it, and a piece of property comes up for sale over here, but for financial and tax reasons, the whole family doesn't want to buy it. You designate a child to buy it, then they pay back the entire family. And in the same, in the same kind of thought process, if you loan your child money to buy a car, oh, hey, if you're in the same family, just forgive it. You kind of expect your child to pay back. So, you know, we, we are paying that back, but that was what the voters in 2000 said would happen and, and we need to uphold that.
The other, the other comment to that, being two separate entities, the loan was given by Sandy Pines. It's gotta get paid back. If we forgive that loan, then that loan comes and it stays on Sandy Pines' balance sheet. We're gonna have to pay it back regardless either way. Either through the golf course with the profits and help the public pay that back, or we're gonna have to pay 100% of it on our own because if you forgive it at Lake Monterey Golf Course, it's gonna stay on Sandy Pines' balance sheet and still gonna have to get paid back.
I can speak loud enough. So the thing that's not being addressed is liability. So if something were to happen here and there was a lawsuit, Sandy Pines cannot be sued. Is that correct?
Great, great point. They are, they are separate entities.
Yeah, so you want to keep them separate for that reason, the loan I would pay.
So again, that, if anybody in the back, uh, back, uh, back nine didn't hear that one, the, uh, the question was liability. Isn't it one of the reasons they have two separate entities from a liability standpoint? The answer is absolutely because again, um, we do a lot of things here that we don't do up there. If anything happens, then it's a, it's a, it's a liability specific to this entity. All right, any other questions?
Jeff?
Yes, ma'am.
I just want to point out that there's a suggestion box up here for anybody that has ideas that can help bring in more public or business for this golf course. I talked to Dave, Larry, I don't know who, but there is a box up there for anybody open to the public, open to the members. Please put your suggestions in that may help bring in business. And they go through it, any ideas whatsoever. I'm a golfer, I own clubs, but I just don't get in the shape of the ball around.
She owns clubs to hit you like that.
I don't blame her.
We're, we're gonna delete that from the recording. All right, we've got about, uh, four, four minutes left, so I want to read one last question because this one does continue to pop up, um, in reference to kind of the, the loan and how much the members have put into this golf course. So, um, this writing question states, we paid 4.4 million dollars, we would, we would have paid 4.4 million dollars as members by 2025. Why isn't the loan paid off and what's happening with this money? Again, I think we've talked about what's happening with the money. The math I get makes sense, 4.4 million. They're really taking the, the two different assessments, the $125 assessment, which I believe was four years, and then through 2025, the $150 assessment. Again, 4.4 million dollars, but if you go over that timeframe, I think this individual was, again, using a longer bit of the timeframe, but just the timeframe for this 10-year assessment, if we use 4.4 million dollars that we put into this, $500,000 to run the golf course. $500,000 times 10 years, you know, is not 4.4 million dollars. It's a little bit larger than 4.4 million dollars. So the assessment is to help operate the golf course. It, it doesn't cover everything. It doesn't cover paying the loan back. It, and it doesn't cover operating this at 100%. We still have some work to do, so. All right, we'll end on this one.
Um, you, you had said, okay, 120, well, you had said we got about six years left on the loan? And then, so at this $125...
Where that 6.4 years or six years left on the loan is based on the assumption that we continue to pay at a $75,000 rate. So if we get this passed, you get $216,000 in the operating budget. We're gonna raise the members and associates' rates, which gets us about 54 to 60,000 dollars, which is magically about $270,000, which we've been paying. We can plan on trying to sustain that 75 thou, $75,000. That is the plan. Okay? Sure?
I also want to remind you that that, currently the 150 includes capital, okay? So, um, also the 125 will include capital. So we'll all go to operating, just to let you know that.
Okay, with that, we'll give you back, uh, two minutes of your day. We've got a clearing in the rain, so you guys can jump on your golf carts and, uh, head back. Thank you for coming.